Okay. I will, I will call the meeting of the Rancho Palos Verdes Planning Commission meeting to order. So if we could begin with a pledge of allegiance. Eric?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if, Director, if we could have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Brock. Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Commissioner Noman.
Here.
Commissioner Peristam.
Here.
Commissioner Sadat Najati.
Here.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa.
Here.
And we have Chair Chura joining us online. And just to that point, the City, the Planning Commission will need to vote to approve Chair Chura's request to join remotely pursuant to Government Code Section 49, excuse me, 54953F. And then we'll need to have Chair Chura then confirm and disclose whether there are any individuals in the room from where he's participating that are 18 years or older. So the first would be a vote from the Commission to approve the Chair joining remotely.
I'll make that motion.
There we go. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And we will do everything on a roll call.
Right, we have to do a roll call. So we have a roll call on this, please?
Yes. Commissioner Brock. Commissioner Nelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Noman.
Yes.
Commissioner Peristam.
Yes.
Commissioner Sadat Najati.
Yes.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa.
Yes.
And Chair Chura.
Do I get to vote on my own?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you very much for letting me join the meeting.
Okay. So our next item is the approval of the agenda.
But does he disclose where he is and?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need the Chair to disclose if there are any individuals in the room from where he's participating that are 18 years or older.
Yes, thank you. Yes, so there's no one here of eight, there's no one here at all. I'm alone.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Or Matt, sorry. So the next item is the approval of the agenda. So moved? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second, thank you, Bob. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brock.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Noman.
Yes.
Commissioner Peristam.
Yes.
Commissioner Sadat Najati.
Yes.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa.
Yes.
And Chair Chura.
Yes.
Okay. So moving on to communications, any items from council?
No communications for City Council items or staff.
Okay.
I, I take that back. For staff, just to let you know, City Council will be, they have on their agenda for, for the 18th that they will be considering the, filling the vacancies and then selecting the Chair for, for the coming year.
Very good. Thank you. Any communications from the Commission? Okay. So I will take the opportunity then at this time to recognize the service of both Mr. Peristam and Mr. Sadat and Mrs. Sadat Najati, sorry, I forgot the tongue well. You're coming to the end of your term, so you, we won't see you for quite a while unless you're in the audience or have a matter before us. But we really do appreciate on behalf of all the members here on the Commission, your years of service. And for that, we have a small token of recognition of your service, so if you permit me, I will reach below. So Stephen, thank you very much. Excuse me for not standing. Lan?
Thank you so much.
So we wish you well in your future endeavors. And if I recall correctly, you only get a one-year timeout before you can come back again, so. So please, you know, consider and take advantage of that. But thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Bob. Yes?
I'd just like to make a few comments on this. Lon has been with us now for eight years. I think Stephen is winding up 12 years or something such as this, close to it. More than that? 16? Okay. It's been my pleasure, and I'm sure the pleasure of all the citizens of RPV, to have you on the Planning Commission. Your efforts to make sure that you try and steer the ship straight into the harbor were much, much appreciated. Lon was very quiet the first year he was here. We commented at the end, Lon probably said all of 500 words. However, Steve countered that, and there was no question that Steve was on. But honestly, on behalf of all of RPV and on behalf of the Planning Commissioners who served with you who are not here tonight, I thank you very much for the effort you put forward for all of us in RPV, and I thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Very good.
Did we get a rebuttal? Bob and I get to say stuff?
He put a card in.
I think, I think before you do, Steve, I'd like to, I'd like to add on to that, or take, or at least when my turn comes up.
Go right ahead, David.
And like, oh, thank, I mean, I'll start with Lan. It's been, it's been great serving with you. I mean, for the, when I first joined, you and I were on the ordinance subcommittee, and I think we were working on ADUs, signs, maybe even treehouses, I can't remember for sure, all the different hundreds of pages of ordinances we've gone through. But, but I think back of the time when we were really working the ADU stuff in great detail. You helped a lot in amazing ways for the detail that we needed to really batten down the hatches at that time. And, boy, from my behalf, it's been really great to know you, in fact, even meeting your husband and such. Thank you very much for your service and wish you all the best ahead. And Steve, I know you from the first day I joined as well. And you may have been Chairman, or you were Chairman shortly after that, but I think you really showed me, myself, as well as many people, you know, how to lead the way here. We eventually were both on the Housing Ad-Hoc Committee as well, very complicated, difficult stuff. And, you know, I think of you as one of the founding fathers of view preservation, whether you accept that or not, I don't know. But I never knew the importance of views certainly until, until then, and, and that's just one area of your expertise that you brought to us. You've also become a good friend, well enough to convince my wife to join the CHOA Board, so thank you for that. And I'm really looking forward to seeing what you're going to do for this city and for this community in the future. Thank you very much for all you've done for us and, and how you've influenced me and others here. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you all.
If I may, well, I just want to, just very briefly, just really appreciative for the city to give me the opportunity to serve. I have to say that through these eight years of experience, you know, I learned about what the city, you know, the ins and outs of the city was happening. And otherwise, I, just before this, I'd just been commuting between home and work and really not, you know, just simply enjoying the, you know, the wonderful city without really knowing what makes it running. So thank, I'd like to thank the city of RPV to give me this opportunity. It's been a pleasure working with all the Commissioners through the years and also really a pleasure, pleasure working with the staff who's been just very, very professional. So it's among, you know, I work with cities and I certainly really appreciative of the staffs of the city and also the, the, basically the city, cities' governance. So again, thank you for the opportunity and we'll, I, well, I, I'm not sure whether or not I would miss coming over here every other Tuesday, but certainly appreciative of the experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Lan.
Thank you, Vice Chair. First of all, it's been an honor to, to serve the community over the last number of years. I want to thank the staff, the current staff, and also the many staff members that have helped us do our job over the last many, many years, because without that, we're not going to get things right. And the better the staff prepares us, the more likelihood that we're going to make, make the right call and make the right decisions. So I thank the staff and all the previous staffs that have been supporting us in the past. I wish, want to wish the, the other Commissioners well and continue the great work that they're doing, to the best of your efforts. And I only have one word, one, one thought of advice. Said, help the new people that come on. Be patient. And just remember, we were all there once, and it is a tough learning curve, so. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it tonight.
Thank you, Stephen. Very good. So with that, we will next move to comments from the audience regarding non-agenda items.
There are no speakers on this.
Okay. So moving on to our next item, the consent calendar, which we just have one item, the approval of the May 28, 2024 Planning Commission minutes. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve or submit.
Thank you, Bob. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Eric. If we could have a roll call, please, Director?
Yes. Commissioner Brock.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Noman.
Yes.
Commissioner Peristam.
Yes.
Commissioner Sadat Najati.
Yes.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa.
I'll abstain as I was absent from that meeting.
And Chair Chura.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to the continued public hearings. And we have before us the view restoration permit, case number PLVR 2022-0010, North Enrose Avenue. We have a staff report, please.
Yes, we have Robert Nemeth here for the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. This case is continued from May 14th. Commission had asked for three questions to be answered. The measurement for the city arborists' recommended 10-feet crown reduction of the ficus tree, the measurement for crown reduction down to the harbor view restorative yellow line, and the height of the tree. Here is a photograph from Mr. Albert's property. The blue line is the 10-feet crown reduction, the yellow line is the 15-feet crown reduction, and the tree height is 50 feet. Here is a photo from Mrs. Mississippi's property. The blue line is 10-feet crown reduction, and the yellow line is 15-feet crown reduction. This is a photo from the Cortez property with the blue line at 10-feet crown reduction and yellow line at 15-feet crown reduction. From the February 13 staff report, determination of a significant view impairment is based on how trees collectively impair the overall view within the view frame. The view restoration guidelines state that any one of the following criteria may be used to help determine whether a view is being significantly impaired by foliage. From the guidelines, foliage that is located in the center of a view frame is more likely to be found to create a significant view impairment than foliage located on the outer edge of a view frame. Here is a photo from the Cortez property that shows the ficus tree in the center of the view frame. From the guide, view restoration guidelines, two greater weights should be given to prominent landmarks or other significant features in the view frame, such as the harbor and city skylines. Here is a photo from Mr. Albert's property, and if the tree is crown reduced down 10-feet to the blue line, it will review prominent landmarks such as the beach city skyline here, the Long Beach International Gateway Bridge here, portions of the Los Angeles and Long Beach harbors. However, if the ficus tree is crown reduced down 15-feet to the yellow line, it reveals all of the previously mentioned prominent features as well as the city of Long Beach, all of the city of Long Beach, all of the city of LA Harbor. Here is a photograph from Mrs. Mississippi's property. If the ficus tree is crown reduced to the blue line 10-feet, it will reveal the Ford Bridge and the Long Beach Harbor. However, if it's reduced down to the yellow line, it will reveal all of the previously mentioned prominent features as well as all of the LA Harbor. And you could see one of the freight ships here that would sail south if the ficus tree was crown reduced down. Now, this is a photo from Mr. Cortez's property. If the tree is crown reduced 10-feet, you will see the Long Beach Harbor. However, if it's down to 15-feet, you'll see the Los Angeles Harbor Main Channel. And here's a picture of a cruise ship. Again, like the February 13 staff report says, staff believes that all six mandatory findings can be made to approve the view restoration permit. Updates since May, Dallas Wells at 29624 South Trotwood Avenue filed a written appeal, but it does not affect the Commission's decision on the ficus tree tonight. Public correspondence, the foliage owner, Alicia McGowan, emailed city staff raising certain objections, except for Ms. McGowan questioning whether the ficus tree causes a significant view impairment, which staff addressed in the PC memo and the previous slides. Staff determined that her arguments are not related to the six mandatory findings. Recommendation, adopt PC resolution number 2024-18, conditionally approving a view restoration permit, requiring the foliage owner at 2138 Fairhill Drive to crown reduce one ficus tree 15-feet from the top of the tree crown, which is the same height level as illustrated in attachment number 3A, with the option to remove and replace it as described in condition of approval number three, in order to restore the applicant's views from 29642 North Enrose Avenue, 29648 North Enrose Avenue, and 29636 North Enrose Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Are there any questions of staff from the Commission? Okay, seeing none, we will turn to the public comments. Do we have any speakers, Director?
Yeah, for the, opening the public hearing?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we have, we will have the, the owner, we have a view owner, Frank Albert, and the view owner will have five minutes to speak.
Hi, good evening. First of all, thank you for taking the time to hear our case. I want to thank Robert, John, and Colleen for all the time they've spent working on this case. We agree with the staff report, recommendation to cut the tree 15-feet down from the top. The difference between the 10- and 15-foot trim level is significant to us as applicants. This tree is 50-feet tall, but it's also extremely wide, which blocks a significant area from a width perspective in addition to the, the tree height. A 10-foot cut from the top will restore our Long Beach, Long Beach Harbor, Long Beach Skyline, Long Beach International Gateway Bridge views. These are prominent viewpoints that are furthest away from our viewing area, however. The 15-foot cut would restore the closest prominent viewpoint and the most significant protected view as stated in the ordinance of the LA Harbor. If the Commissioners rule for a 10-foot cut, we would never have this portion of the view, of the most significant viewpoint of LA Harbor. The ficus tree width blocks a significant area of the LA Harbor, and this portion of the LA Harbor, which is important to us, will never be seen from the view area on each of the applicant's properties. The 15-foot cut will still allow the McGowan family to enjoy their tree, which will still be 35-feet tall, and the applicants will be able to enjoy their protected view of the LA Harbor. Thank you. If you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Are there any questions, the Commission, at this time? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Director?
And, and next we have the foliage owner, who will also have five minutes, Alicia McGowan.
Hi, thank you for hearing my concerns, and thank you, Robert, for all the time you've been visiting my home. I feel like we should be having dinner while you were coming over all the time. Anyways, I'm just concerned about the fact that, yes, I do want to trim my tree, and I'm fine with trimming my tree, once the ravens leave our tree. But I do have a concern, and it was brought to my attention by the neighbor above me, that we do have an unspoken agreement. The agreement states that, which we've always done every time we do trim our tree, is that the tree has to be laced in order for the neighbor to see through the tree. So he was made aware, he's, you know, over 80-years-old, and he sits outside and watches the birds all day. And if I, and he's very into his trees, and Mr. Albert has also made him get rid of many of his trees. So the concern is that if I top my tree by 15-feet, that means that the part that he looks through is now going to fill in, and as a result of the tree filling in, he will lose his view. So he just sits at home all day, and he, you know, would like to be able to have a view too. Then the other concern that I have is that if we top the tree 15-feet, what that means is that the tree is going to turn into a bush. So it starts growing from the bottom up, and it does mean that I have to trim the tree twice a year in order to keep it looking like a tree instead of a bush. So the arborist did state that 10-feet was meant to preserve the aesthetic value of the tree, so I do believe that that would keep my tree from looking like a bush, and it was also provide the gentleman up above me to be able to see through the tree. And I did send the, the letter to, Robert can pull it up, that the foliage owner above me sent regarding the agreement that we do have. Then the other concern I have is if you put a restoration permit on my home, once I do go to sell my home, it makes it more difficult for me to sell it, because I do have to disclose it at the time of sale. So that is a problem to my property value. So if you could pull that up. Do you have that, Robert? The, the letter from the foliage owner above me. So I guess my concern is I'm just hoping that everyone can consider that 10-feet and then lacing the tree, as I always do with the neighbor. Oh, this is the tree that's on the corner that Mr. Albert trimmed 10-years ago. So I guess I'm just also concerned that I don't want my tree looking like that. That's a real problem. So here is the letter from the gentleman that's directly above me, and like I said, he would have been here, but he, he isn't able to make it. So it just simply states that, you know, we have an agreement. It's, the tree's not a problem for him, and that I, you know, that he just wanted to make sure I just lace it so he can see through it. Okay, that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? We have none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another speaker?
The next speaker is Ryan McGowan. The next speaker is Ryan McGowan.
Good evening, members of Rancho Palos Verdes City Council. My name is Ryan McGowan. I'm the son of Alicia McGowan, owner of the tree at 2138 Fair Hill Drive. Today, I will be speaking on the significance of the tree to our family, the agreement we have with our neighbor above, as well as the bylaws in relation to the applicants, and the discussion of the bylaws, which are crucial to the case, which will set a precedent for future view ordinance restorations. First, the tree significance. The tree significance has to do with the passing of my father on January 10th of this year, which I was forced to move back to Palos Verdes because of this. Upon the dispersment of his ashes, I scattered them in the canopy of the tree as a symbol of our family for four generations. I was not aware at the time of the complainant's intentions to cut the tree, cite so dear to me upon laying my father to rest finally. Otherwise, I wouldn't have done so. During all of these meetings and remediation that has taken place, the Alberts and the other parties that have not been present during remediation have made it clear they are not open to the compromise in order to restore a part of the harbor view, which shows containers and just generally not aesthetically pleasing. Any damage or mangling of our tree is a direct desecration of my father's final resting place and will cause emotional damage to my family. During the time, during this time, we apologize for any transgressions that me or my mother might have made or caused, but during this whole process, we have been in grieving the tragic loss of my father. And this constant process has left us in a further pain over the possible desecration of his grave. Second, as the law is written, I am sure you are aware of how the law states that remediation should happen between two parties, not multiple at once. I would also like to be made aware that the Cortezes have not been present for any meetings or remediation during this whole process, and the Minniviches have been, as well as the Alberts. However, during remediation, only the Alberts were present. Edison has trimmed the trees, which were the concerns to the Minniviches about due to the electrical lines being close to it, which obviously that is a concern. So we're very happy to hear that. And then, as you are aware, the complainants must be, have to pay a fine for each property cited. I would like proof that each complainant actually paid that property fee for this complaint. Three, above us on Trotwood, we have a verbal agreement with the neighbor to keep our tree as it is in order to preserve his view. Any cutting or trimming due to the decision by the city will alter his view negatively and cause them to lose their view, possibly entirely, with alterations to our tree that are made haphazardly. My mother provided a handwritten letter from them to counsel with acknowledgement of how the yearly lacing and trimming has been enough to, in order to preserve their view. Fourth, bylaws, the bylaws I would like to reiterate are 17.02.040. A view, which is protected by this section, shall not include variant lands, sites, developments under this code, distant mountains, areas not normally visible, and over the sky may extend the horizontal direction of 360 horizontal arc and shall be considered as a single view, even if broken into segments by foliage structures or under, understand, or foliage structures, understand the same, yeah, other interferences. Apologies for that. Dry mouth. The applicants each have a view of the harbor, which I do understand is not what they are currently wanting, but the bylaw states that the view shall be, shall be a view even if segmented. Bearing this in mind, the designation of the whole harbor as a view will set a precedent in which the future applicants can refer back to in order to obfuscate any decision by the city.
If you could conclude your remarks, or?
Oh, yeah. I can end it right here if you want. I have, like, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Just wanted to not take too much of your guys' time. Did you do? Sorry. Let me end it. Defining the entire process. I hope these reasons will be enough to make a fair decision as well, see that we have tried to be compromising and are amenable to 10 feet, and have open dialogue, but the complainants have disregarded any compromise we offer in any attempt to true remediation. The goal is not to just keep the tree alive, but keep the aesthetic value as well as the sentimental, which as property owners, we have a right to make an appeal and payment of $3,000 for that. We hope to see a fair decision be made and end this emotional process so our family can grieve in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioners at this time? Very good. So, Director, any other speakers?
Yeah, one more speaker, Tracy Wells.
I'm a neighbor. I have watched my neighborhood die. The last time I was here, the council remarked upon the unusual number of trees that were being considered. They don't have any idea how many trees have gone down or been horribly mutilated in our neighborhood. Ryan just showed you a photograph of the weeping willow tree on the corner, which was cut according to the regulations, right at the, right at the roof line. And we've looked at it for the last 10 years. There's another tree right beside it, exactly the same, not quite as large, but we're left looking at it. The, the, the neighbor with whom the McGowans have a spoken agreement, and they get along together really well. This, this has worked for them. They had, they lost our trees too, or had some trees mutilated. They're our neighbors too. Every bit of foliage that has gone from our neighborhood has affected all of us. We were a lovely neighborhood. We were leafy and green. People came into our little section of what was San Pedro, we were annexed by Rancho Palos Verdes, and they relaxed. It was something nice to look at. This is our view that is being destroyed, piece by piece, and now we're down to the last four properties, and they're going to go to. This tree of the McGowans, it's one of the last glories of our neighborhood. If you just saw it, you would understand. It is, it was planted the year the house was built. What is that, 65 years?
Fifty-two.
Yeah, 52. It has been there that long. I, you know, I know that I cannot say anything that will change your mind. You will follow the law no matter what. But I think I'm talking to the applicants and asking them, please, please reconsider. Please, it's not worth the price that is being paid for this. They have a very nice view, the view they had when they moved into the house. That's the view they bought and paid for. It's better than any view that any of us have. They're probably the only three people in the, in the whole neighborhood that have a significant view. The rest of us have like little glimpses here and there. But we're not a view neighborhood, people. We are small houses crowded together on a hillside. We get along together really well. we've lost our neighborhood. It's gone. I'm sorry, I've, I've spent too much time. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioners? Nope, hearing none. Okay. Any other speakers, Director?
That was the final speaker.
Okay, we will now close the public portion of the meeting and turn back to the commissioners for deliberations. Any questions or deliberations? Yes, Stephen?
Thank you, First Chair. I have some questions for staff.
Okay.
First, thank, thank you, thank you, Robert, for making this effort and make, the detail I was talking about earlier that makes us help us make decisions. This was really a case where we put you on the spot a couple of weeks ago to help us, help us make a decision tonight. So I appreciate that very much, the extra effort. Second question is, what, what's the maintenance requirement that goes along with this regardless of, of whatever the, the level of the tree is cut, if it is cut? Is it an annualized? Could you elaborate a little bit?
Yes. So it's an annual, it'll be an annual trimming. And so after the year passes, the applicants can contact staff if it's not voluntarily trimmed, and then we'll go out and take a look, and then, yeah, and let the foliage owners know if it's, if it's grown up, and then to cut it back down.
There was a reference to how it's going to grow. Do we know the growth rate on this type, on a ficus? On an annual basis, and how, how much is expected on a tree of this size?
No, I mean, we know that it's a ficus tree, they grow back quickly, but, you know, the variables change depending on rain. But regardless of how much it grows back, or, you know, how quickly or slowly, if it's above whatever line the commission sets tonight, we, we can have it trimmed if.
Okay. Next question is, with the restoration permit, that goes with the deed, correct? If we decide to do a cutting, regardless of what that level is, is that correct?
It'll run with the land.
It'll run with the land, regardless of the amount of the cutting, right? It's, that's part of this decision-making?
Yes. I guess when I say it runs with the land, we'll have it in our case file for future owners, should they sell, the applicants sell, it'll still be part, as well as the foliage owner. The properties will be referenced in the property file.
Okay. And my last question is more, and it really is a question, is to anybody that can help. How come that willow tree's there from a number of years ago and has not been removed to the ground that was referred to?
Oh.
Because that's awful. I mean, and, and I can't imagine that if that went through this view restoration process and it was decided that that tree would be removed, that that was, that was the outcome? Because I've never seen that before, that we would leave something like that. So what, what happened there, and what can we do about it?
I don't, like, I've been here nine years, and I was not involved in any case with that property. I don't believe any decision was made. You know, oftentimes, neighbors write to each other, and they work out a private trim agreement without the city's involvement. I'm not aware of that being a city case.
Oh, I see, it was just private party?
Exactly.
Okay. Then, then a broader question, is there anything we can do about that, having a stump that's 20, 20 feet, 25 feet tall? Do we have any discretion there?
Any citizen can contact the Code Enforcement Division if, if they believe it's a dead or dying beyond restoration, if they would like it reviewed as a property maintenance violation, someone can call that in to the Code Enforcement Division, but that's a separate division in the city.
But, but there is some action that could be taken?
Yes, there's a process where that could be reviewed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, First Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions of this commission?
I just have a request. Can you put up the panoramic view?
Yes. Commissioner Nohman, would you like it?
Any panoramic is fine. Just know the, the full view.
The full, yes, I got one from the Cortez property.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions for staff, but I have some comments, but if anybody else wants to ask staff questions while we have them. All right. You know, for me, this case has been really helpful, and I've learned a lot from it. Always learning, right? But, you know, I think with the view preservation, I think that one aspect that came up on this case, which it didn't quite sink in on the, on the previous ones we've had, was the idea of significance. And it's, and I think what we're, a lot of the discussion has been, is does it impair a portion of the harbor? And it, I don't think impairing is the equivalent of significance. So I, I think significant obstruction is related to the whole view, and not about just blocking a portion of the view. And for me, if, if we're going to take something from another resident, it has to be significant. And for me, the, the, the tree blockage, especially kind of at the level that the arborist recommends, would not consider, would not be considered a significant view obstruction to the whole view. You know, I, I think that we were right in terms of the, the blockage along the power lines, that was a significant blockage, and I'm glad we, we gave relief to the, the view owners that had that. But in this particular tree, I don't see that, I don't see it ruining the quality of their life or of their view, the significance of their view, by having that tree remain. And I think it would have a detrimental effect to the owners of that property, of the tree, taking that away. So for me, it does not constitute a significant obstruction, so I will not be voting to take it down to the staff recommendation 15-foot line.
David, you're very small, and any comments that you might have?
Yeah, sure. I can go next. I have two thoughts on this, with a preview, which is, thank you very much, Robert, for bringing the information we wanted. I really appreciate that. We've got, we've had more information on this tree than maybe any tree that I've seen, and actually was very enlightening and helpful. And I, I think, I think that the, the ordinances around significance are not just the size, but also points of interest. And I think this was considered significant by the staff primarily because of, of, of points of interest that are blocked. And if this is a, a, something that you want to sit in your backyard and point out, it, it is to be considered. So because of that, I think there is a significance here. However, I think what I can see from the, from the 10, 15-foot, that I don't think that the 10 or 15 makes a big difference in the significance of how much of that point of interest is blocked, primarily because of the distance that this tree is away from the, the viewing area. We've had a number of cases where the trees are much closer to the viewing area, and of course, that's much more significant. And at this, at this particular distance, I agree with the staff that there's points of interest that are being blocked, but I, I, I would be happy with the 10-foot line because we would know that the tree would be 40 feet high, which is a pretty significant tree, that it would have aesthetic value that's very good, if not, it's not as good as it will ever be, right? It's still very good at a 40-foot, pretty significant tree. And in fact, the arborist would said that the tree will not die either in, in any of those cases. So in, in summary, what I see is, is that this tree is very far away, so its significance is not as large in the entire view frame. I agree with that. However, the fact that it's blocking points of interest suggests to me that we, we have something to enforce. And, and the difference between 10 and 15, to me, is not very meaningful at this distance, so I would certainly support a 10-foot reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Yes, Matt?
Thank you. If we can look at the other properties, please, again, because what is, you know, that's a problem we have when you have three applicants, is for one property, it's a different view impairment than the other. So I just want to make sure that we are looking at all three respectfully. Sorry, Robert.
I'm sorry. All right, this photograph's from the Misitich property.
Okay. Remember, just for reference, eight is what we're discussing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm ready to move on when, as long as everybody else is, to the next one. Thank you.
This is from Mr. Albert's property.
Right, and just says, when you move left to right, it can block something from one property that's visible from another. And then? The next one, please?
Yes. And then, this is the Cortez property again.
Okay, thank you. I love what Commissioner Nohman said, you know, we, we have to find it to be significant. Unfortunately, to me, it is significant. And as much as I hate it, the fact that it is significant, and as much as I wish the homeowner would, you know, the view owner would reconsider, I, to me, we have to follow what the law says. Now, it is significant. What I would hope that maybe we could lace it down to the 15? So that we, we're not taking the entire tree, but we are opening up some of that view to make it less of a significant impact. I mean, here, when you're looking at it, I mean, you're blocking the harbor, the one that really struck out to me was the one with the cruise ship. And, I mean, here, I mean, you would have been able to see the entire cruise ship at the yellow line. And to me, that's, that's significant. So as much as I hate, hate it, I can't in good faith say that's not significant.
Thank you, Matt. Any other guests, Bob?
I agree with Matt. This is a view restoration item. We are trying to restore a view. To me, these views are significant. And I am one who would, who would do the 15 feet. I'm looking at this picture right now, and the difference between 10 feet and 15 feet is significant in the view. This is a view restoration permit, and I will support cutting that tree to 15 feet. Thank you.
If I may interject, I'll clarify my comment. I said I was okay with the 10 foot, but I'm certainly be okay if the commission goes to 15 as well. I wasn't trying to exclude that. I was trying to identify that I think something needs to be done.
Thank you, David. Lance?
I also agree that there's a significant, that staff's finding that the significant view is being blocked, particularly if we're considering known landmarks. If, if it weren't for the blockage of the Joe Desmond Bridge, or Vincent Thomas Bridge, or the cruise ship, that argument probably is, is, can be less to be made, but the blockage of those significant landmarks, I do have to agree that there's a significant, significant visual impact that we need to restore. And in terms of the 10 or 15 feet, I will support the 15 feet. Not only just for the fact that it will restore the, the views of what's been discussed already, but also, you know, just within the year, the tree is going to grow very quickly. And then, and then, I'm not really sure how, how much of the, the view being restored is going to, going to, you know, I mean, how, 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 how beneficial it is to, 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 to not keeping that additional five, five feet? Because after, if we were to cut to the 10 feet, then after the tree grows, then the view is being blocked again. But if it's cut to 15 feet, if it's reduced by 15 feet, then, then the view could at least be, can, can, can kind of still stay, be maintained for, for a good amount of time. And then in terms of the, the tree itself, it will survive per the arborist. And then also, the, the, from, from down below, it probably is not, I mean, the, the down below, the, the shades are still going to be maintained. I would assume that we're, you know, the canopy below the 15 feet line, they're going to still be maintained as pretty much what's being shown in the picture, right? The canopy itself, short of maybe just being trimmed a little bit to, to make it look more aesthetically pleasing, but, but there's no, there's no mandatory reduction on the, on any, anything that's below the 15 feet line. So with that, I will support the staff's recommendation to, to reduce the crown by 15 feet.
Stephen, any comments?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Clearly, the, the trimming, whether it's anywhere between the 10 to 15, it's going to restore the view that's impacted significant view obstructions we have right now. And so I was concerned, I went back out, I took pictures, I ran over everybody's yard side by side, not only the primary viewing areas, because I wanted to know what was behind this tree from every angle possible. And so what I found, and is if you, if you take a look starting at the prominent features, you have a restoration of the view, and I'm going to start, I'm going to start at 15. You have a restoration, because that's the staff recommendation, at Long Beach City Skyline, you have it restored from the Misitich property, the Albert property, and the Cortez property. You look at the Long Beach International Gateway Bridge, at 15 feet, it's restored. The Henry Ford Bridge is restored from all three of those properties. So what it comes down to here is, from what I could tell, all these, these prominent features are also restored with 10 foot, 10 feet of cutting. So the decision making for me came down to the harbor, the harbor view in front of us. And if you take the look at, and I think this is, could we go to the Albert property? If this is, okay, the Albert property is a great example of this. So if you go around to the left of the Albert property and you look at what's there, because right now you see that, the, the channel go through there. But the channel actually ends right there, the vision to the channel, and it comes down a little closer, and it's land behind there. So what I could tell is that the difference between the 10 and 15 feet is not channel getting cleared out, but for the most part, it's land and some, and some structures. So that, I tried to duplicate that from the other, the other, the other applicant's properties, and it really didn't have the same effect on, on, as, as the, this, this picture going down to the left. So I got to the point then of, well, what is, what do we do? If, if, if I believe that we can get the same result of a significant view relief less than 15 feet, then what's the right number? And unfortunately, we only have the, the data point of 10 feet, because that's what the arborist's comments were. But that's, that's not a reference point of anything, really. That's the arborist's input, which is really not a bearing on this decision, but it is a data point. So given that, we have a good second marker here. So that's became my, my base case of, of the analysis. So what I found is I happen to agree with, with Commissioner Nohman's assessment here with the view. I have a view, I have a similar view. And if I look around, what you see in a view is the highest object. And if you remove the highest object, you know what you see the next thing? The next new highest object. And if you remove that one, it's the next, next new highest object. And you have to step back and say, okay, are all these objects, because your eye goes to the highest one, significant? And I went home and I had the same debate with myself after, after coming back from, from the visit. And so a long story here with this is, I, I agree with Commissioner Nohman's assessment about the significance. So then, the next question is, what does give relief? If, if 15 is probably an excess of what gives relief, is 10 enough? So where I got to on this one is, I thought with the, with, from what I could tell in the additional pictures, that the 10, somewhere between 10 and 12 feet would be, for lack of a better term, the sweet spot, which would restore the significant impact of that. So with the additional information hearing fellow commissioners today, I can support a 10 foot cut, I can actually go probably to an 11 or 12 foot cut, but I think that the, the, the cut to 15 is really not going to give back anything that's significant in terms of a view. And I'm sorry to be long-winded on this, but I wanted to go through my thought process and, and hopefully for, for the benefit of others. So I'm okay at 10. I'm not okay at 15. I think it's excessive and unnecessary, and I have a little wiggle room on that 10 number. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Eric, any last comments or?
No, I appreciate all the effort in explaining that. Thank you very much.
So then, if I could, for myself, I do find that the tree does cause a significant impairment. I've been through other view restoration ideas, and if this were more of a palm tree, where it's basically a stick in the view, I could then have some empathy towards the notion that it's not significant, because it's not necessarily dead center and obstructing. But the girth of this tree, in fact, I think we do it injustice. This is really a bush that is fairly high, and the canopy that it creates at the top does, in my mind, cause significant impairment. So with respect then to the cut line, whether it's 10 or 15, I appreciate the comments that Commissioner Peristam has made, but to start to, you know, arbitrate 10, 10 and a half, 10 and three quarters, 10 and five eights, I, I think we're taking liberty on, on a judgment call, which I guess we're all allowed to have judgments, but I just think it's starting to put, as I would call it, micrometers at the end of yardsticks. So for myself, I do think the 15 foot cut, whether that's land or not, that's still the harbor. And so while I know there's some aesthetic value to water, the harbor is more than just water, it is all the other machinations that occur in the harbor, from ships to the cranes to even the cargo containers. So, so for myself, I, while I understand a desire to find something other than the 15 line, I, for myself, I'm happy to support the 15. So with that said, yes, Bob?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you very much. What your motion would be?
My motion is going to be that we approve staff recommendation to 15 feet, and I'll tell you why. If we choose 12, the tree is going to grow. It will reach 12 feet. That's no question. But we're on a view restoration, so my motion again is that we improve staff recommendation to 15 feet with a realization the tree is going to grow. And there will be 12 feet, and there'll probably be 11 feet. Thank you.
So we have a motion for staff recommendation? Is there a?
I'd like to comment on that.
Sure.
Yeah, it, you know, can we?
Let's first get a second, and then if it's viable, then we'll go into discussion. Is that, that okay? All right. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lance. So we have a first and a second. So now we'll have discussion. So Eric?
Yeah, again, you know, in, it's, it's the entirety of the view, and if, does remove, cutting this down to, from 10 feet to 15 feet significantly increase the value of the view? And I don't think it does. It's, this, this tree is less than 5% of the view. And so changing that 5%, notching it up, does not significantly improve the view. And that's the position that I feel, and I think that, going back in terms of the judgment call, significance is a judgment.
Understood.
And that's, I think, our job here is to have a judgment on it, on whether or not it has significance.
And Eric, this is David. I, I agree with you on that. Do you not, do you not count the points of interest as, as being significant in one of them?
I don't think it blocks any points of interest.
Not the bridge or the?
I didn't see it blocking any bridges from any of the photographs.
Well, as the staff report claims that it does.
So if we?
I don't think it, I mean, you could see the, the bridges on it. I mean, they're behind it or adjacent to it, but they don't obscure it. And I think if it blocked the bridge, and I didn't see any photographs and it did, that would be a significant blockage. But I don't think it does. It just blocks part of the channel, and I don't think that portion of the channel is a significant feature of the entirety of the view.
Eric, Commissioner Nohman, it says 15 feet includes the Long Beach International Gateway Bridge. You included that, if I'm correct, as what would be revealed if we cut to 15 feet?
Yes, this is from the Albert property, and from the Albert property, 10 feet reveals the Gateway Bridge. But the next slide from Misitich, if you look over here at the Ford Bridge to the left, if we go over to the Misitich's property, the Ford Bridge, you can't see the Ford Bridge, you can't even see water around the ficus tree from the Misitich property. You could see the International Gateway Bridge to the right here, but the Ford Bridge is completely obscured from the Misitich's property. Again, let's go back to the last slide, the Ford Bridge is to the left, you could see the East Basin. I disagree with Commissioner Peristam, this is the Turning Basin, where the two channels meet. But if we go to the next slide, what's going to disappear is all of the water and the Ford Bridge. No water, you could see a freight ship, you know what's going on water, but I can't see blue. I can't see blue to the left or right. And if I could go further, Commission, if I could show you a map of the harbor, just, I just want to circle what the ficus tree is blocking, depending on which of the applicant's properties you're on. Again, we have the Turning Basin, from that, which you split towards the West Basin or the East Basin, towards the Ford Bridge, which divides LA and Long Beach harbors. And so the, the circled items are the portions of the water that are being blocked from the Albert's property and from the Misitich's property.
Okay, can I ask a question on this? Well, go back one, Robert. Excuse me. The International Gateway Bridge, what you see there is the top point of it, but the majority of the bridge is missing in this picture, correct?
Yes.
There's a huge, if you go to the picture that shows it, you'll see there to the right, you see all of the structures that hold up the roadway and all of that, right? That's considered the bridge, right? All of that is missing in the, in the next slide or previous slide. All of that is missing in the next slide or previous slide, whichever one. Is that correct? Yes.
Yes.
All of that is missing. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Any other discussion points?
Yeah, I don't think those structure points go all the way down to the yellow line in this view.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a first and we have a second. So if we could do a roll call, please, Director?
If I may, would, sorry. You know, 15 feet, would you be, or are you saying no cuts, period?
Well, 15 is the yellow line, right?
I mean, 10 feet, the blue line, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think to the arborist recommendation, the 10-foot line, yeah.
Well, I thought you were arguing, Eric, for no cut, because you said no significance means no cut.
I could support the reduction of the arborist line, kind of without destroying the aesthetic value of the tree.
Okay, that's a, yeah, it was along with David. You said no view, it meant, to me, it meant no cut. Okay, so to clarify, you're saying you would support a 10-foot cut if that was before us?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And I guess Commissioner Peristam?
I want to be clear that when I was referring to agreeing with Mr. Nolman, that was, that was, that I think there is a significant view impact, but I'm not in agreement to go to 15 feet.
Understood.
Okay.
That's what got me, Steve, when you said you agree with Eric. It turned out in the end you were not.
No, no, I agree with his approach to the significance, the broader significance of the view. And my findings, I'll go with Robert a little bit, back and forth. What I took, I took from the Misitich picture, which was the most difficult household to evaluate, by the way, that the Ford Bridge would come back with the 10-foot cut. So that's my interpretation from what I saw. So I don't know if that's what we're disagreeing on or not. But no, I, there's significant view impact here.
Okay.
So I just wanted to add that clarification.
Yeah, so just to clarify, because again, I'll, to clarify, and Eric, please, if we misunderstood, from my perspective, the decision tree begins, is it significant or not significant? If you answer yes to significant, then the next question is, then what do you do with it? But if there's no significance, then there's nothing to do. We move on. So when I heard you say you didn't think it was significant, to me, it doesn't matter what height it is, it's that it was, it ended at that point.
That was exactly my interpretation as well.
Okay. So just to, for the benefit of our discussion here, for clarification, that the decision tree begins with significance, yes or no? If yes, then what to do? And I believe, if I'm hearing correctly?
So just to be clear, I do not think it significantly impacts the entirety of the view.
Understood.
But I am willing to support the relief of it, but not to the point of killing the, or eliminating the aesthetic value of the tree down.
Okay, I appreciate that. So now go ahead.
Yeah, now I have to clarify my interpretation. What I heard from that statement, I made, and I apologize, I made the assumption that there was significance. When Commissioner Nolman just explained that, I don't agree with that part of the statement, but I agree with the rest of his statement. Does that, does that give everybody clarity? Because I don't want to be misleading here.
So to?
I think the chair, I messed up the chair the most, but.
I think there's an obstruction. I was listening intently to your agreement with Commissioner Nolman, and I was trying to find out where you were in agreement with.
But to, if I could help us at this point, I'm sorry, Matt, don't, who am I looking at now?
Obstruction, but I didn't find that the obstruction was significant.
Okay, all right. And so you're suggesting perhaps that we can relieve the obstruction by a cut that doesn't quite go down to the yellow line?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So before taking roll call, to recap our conversation, we have a motion on the table that was first and second, and that we've just discussed, of following staff recommendation, there is a finding of significance that the tree would be reduced to the 15-cut line. But based on the conversations we've been having, it seems like there may be support for the idea that there's significance, but perhaps only to obtain relief to the 10-foot line. Is that a fair recap? Okay. So what I would suggest then, just as a point of order, let's take up the first motion, and let's see where that takes us. And then if we need to, we will discuss again. So with the motion on the table, if we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Brock?
And to be clear, this is not to deny or approve, this is simply whether or not we're cutting at?
This is supporting staff recommendation.
Yeah, no, this is, this is a decision, Commissioner, if my path.
Right, right. And should this motion fail, we can then discuss it further to whatever we might do, so.
Just make sure that we can continue to discuss if it does indeed fail.
A second, please.
Just making sure we can continue to discuss if it does indeed fail.
We have to do something, yes.
So yeah, I'm going to vote no, because I think we need some more discussion on this.
Sorry, if we give votes, no.
No.
Okay.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I'm going to vote yes, because trees grow.
Commissioner Nolman?
No.
Commissioner Peristam?
No.
Commissioner Sadat Najati?
I'm going to, I'm voting for yes, because the trees will grow.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa?
No.
And Chair Chura?
Yes.
So.
It does not pass. It was a three to four vote.
Okay. So let's now continue our conversation, and perhaps we can find another motion that might work for the benefit of the commission. Go ahead, David.
I'm happy to make that motion, that we move to accept staff recommendation, except cut to the 12, 10-foot line instead.
Very good. Thank you, David. Is there a second for that motion? Sorry. So he's?
Did he say 10 or 12?
I said 10.
10, so staff recommendation except for the height, which will now be at 10-foot.
The reason I picked 10, Steve, was because it's the arborist view.
Okay.
As much as I respect your view and your, and your research, I also stated that I don't think the difference between 10 and 15 and 12 is visually much anyway. So I was looking to find a way that we would preserve as much of the tree, at least from the arborist perspective, while still giving significant, if not complete, belief. So that's why I moved for 10, I moved for 10-foot, primarily based on the arborist view.
Okay, so we have the motion. Is there a second? All right, I will second the motion. So we have a first and a second, so we have a roll call, please.
Further discussion?
You can have discussion.
I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. Any discussion, Stephen? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to address the chair. I think we're in a.
Listening.
Something didn't sound right. We're still not connecting here. I actually had the opposite position, that I thought that 10 feet, in fact, did give relief. And that even more may give relief. It may be less significant cut necessary than the 10, or, I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting messed up now. 15 gives relief, 10 gives relief, but it may have to be more than that to get that relief. That's, that was my point. That I was somewhere in the middle there. And so I didn't sound like we were, we didn't seem like we were communicating. I just want to make that clear.
You're right, you're, and I see, and I, you know, part of me believes we're splitting hairs at this point, but, and I said I would go to 15 if necessary, because I see that's, that would certainly go. The thing that, that introduced here that I thought was persuasive to me was the trees growing part. But I still felt that the arborist point of view could be respected, and I thought that that would work. I'm, I think I've already stated, between 10 and 15 will work for me. If we find 15 doesn't work, we can go through a series of motions to find the right foot, but maybe this discussion should, could come up with a number. And I will support a number between 10 and 15.
Okay, so again, the motion made and seconded is that staff approve, staff report, but for the cut, the cut at 10-foot. So Stephen, you had your comments. Matt, any comments?
Yes, please. When this tree is cut, is it going to be a flat cut at? It's going to be a flat cut at?
I would imagine so.
At 10. I guess what I was, you know, when I mentioned lacing earlier, was trying to preserve some of the aesthetic, you know, cutting between 10 to 15 and, you know, rounding it or lacing it, so that you actually, it still looks like a tree. It doesn't look like just a flat bush that was.
I think, you know, to your idea of invoking semicircles or other type of curvatures, I think the apex would be at the 10-foot, and anything that's below that would be fine. So if the foliage owner wants to create more of a crown effect, if the foliage owner wishes to lace it.
That's a fair point.
I think that's up to them, but the key would be the apex of that, of that tree would be no higher than the 10-foot idea. Or, you know, 10-foot from the top, I think that's what we're measuring.
Okay, that satisfies that. Thank you.
Okay.
Robert may have some input on that. Your experience with that, Robert? With curvature? Do we weigh into that?
You know what? Our cut is strictly for the view. It'll be flat, and everything that the commission said is correct. It'd be up to the foliage owner if they want to aesthetically shape it to make it look like a tree. And if I can add one more thing, because the bird was reported by the foliage owner, it won't be trimmed until, the earliest would be October. Because that window to trim, when a bird nest, an active bird nest is found, as reported by the, by the owner, is between October and the last day of December. That's the only window in the whole year. So we have June, July, August, September, four more months of growth on that ficus tree, one of the fastest-growing trees.
So yes, Robert?
And Robert, it is, will be the responsibility of the foliage owner to maintain that height, correct? And all anybody has to do is just call the city and say, hey, we need a cut?
Yes, after one year.
After one year.
Any of the co-applicants.
Well, as you say, it's a fast-growing tree, so it'll be a call made after one year. That's the responsibility, trimming cost responsibility they have to bear, correct?
The foliage owner, yes.
Thank you. Another reason why I went for 15 feet.
I have a question for the staff, for clarification, then the, the reduction, is it from the height of today, today's height, or from the height, you know, four months later?
It's from today's height.
It'll be where that line is?
Yeah.
So basically, it's, it'll be 40, a 40-foot tall tree, so nothing beyond 40 feet from the base of that tree.
Okay, I guess, Matt, any further?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So any other discussion on the motion? Okay. So Director, if we could have a roll call? Oh, to, sorry, the motion again was to accept staff report, except the cut line to be 10-foot, or to stay slightly different, no more than a 40-foot-high tree, since it's a 50-foot-high tree today. Okay, was that clarified? All right.
All right.
Director?
Commissioner Brock?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolman?
Yes.
Commissioner Peristam?
Yes.
Commissioner Sadat Najati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa?
Yes.
And Chair Chura?
Yes.
Very good. Motion passes. Thank you very much. The applicant has a, Octavia?
It's a 15-day appeal period.
15-day appeal period. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is our new public hearings. And it is the code amendment for the development of applications in sign code, case number PLCA 2024005. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners. I'm going to be starting the presentation, and then I'll turn it over to Senior Planner Saradi. This is for two separate code amendments, but since the City Council was initiating them at the same time, we brought them to you at the same time. I'll go to the next slide. For the multiple applications issue, there were several issues that came up that we need to address in the code. And the first is, the existing code does not provide clarification on how we would address multiple preliminary applications or multiple applications for the same entitlement for different projects on the same site. So there are different projects that would conflict with each other, but on the same site. And then as well, Permit Streamlining Act has very precise mandates for deeming an application complete, and the noticing and the final decision timelines on project applications. So when multiple projects are submitted for the same site on a mutually exclusive projects, that, that would physically conflict with each other, there are concerns. The deadlines might be inadvertently missed. The, there may be undue burden on the staff workload, having to review multiple applications on the same site simultaneously. And with those strict mandated deadlines, there may be a lot of confusion on noticing and messaging to the public, and, which, you know, creates a lot of lack of transparency. So a lot of concerns here that our code did not, does not address. And next slide. On May 21st, the City Council initiated the code amendment proceedings to amend the section 17.78.030, consideration of multiple applications, section of the Rancho Palisverdes Municipal Code. And this would be prohibiting multiple preliminary applications or multiple applications for the same entitlement for mutually exclusive projects on the same property at the same time. And next slide. This is the proposed amendment. It would be adding the subsection B under that consideration of multiple applications. Subsection A already addresses when you have multiple applications for the same project on the site, say a variant, you know, if you had a height variance and a grading, major grading permit, those would be considered at the same time. Here, we're adding the subsection B, where now we're addressing projects that are completely different from each other. And this is the language that we have for this. So this is addressing that. It wouldn't address any applications that we've, may have already had submitted, or preliminary applications where multiple have been submitted on a site, but it will prevent that going forward. And then the next slide. Now we're moving on to sign code. You know, we may want to just go ahead and, since we have it separated out, if anybody has any questions on the multiple applications portion of it.
This is Dave, I do when the time is right.
Yeah, right now, the time is right now, David.
I'm not sure if I missed it, Director. Is this going to be an emergency ordinance?
No, this is not an emergency ordinance, but we will be, we do have a public hearing scheduled for July 2nd, if the recommendation is made by the Planning Commission. So City Council have the public hearing on July 2nd, and then the adoption would be considered on July 16th.
And that adoption would come through us, or?
No, to City Council, yeah.
Okay, got it. So at best, we can get this done by July 16th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just one question, just to make sure I understand the legal wording here. So when it says we'll foreclose development of another project, does that mean it will cancel the previous submitted project?
So what it's prohibiting is that they wouldn't be able to submit an application if that application were, so if you had.
But still active.
Yeah, so if you were applying for a pool, and then you're also applying for an expansion of your garage, those are not going to be that mutually exclusive, and one's not going to cancel out the other. But if you came in with an application for five units on a lot, and then you came in with another application that was for 10 units on the lot that's in the exact same spot, or there would be conflict, those are not, those are, one would end up canceling out the other.
Okay. I mean, I might recommend to add additional, I know Legal's already looked at this, but add additional language to it, just because it was a little confusing for me, even though I 100%. I 100% agree with the amendment, but I think just in terms of clarifying it so that there's no confusion on it.
Hold on, David. Go ahead.
No problem.
Director Forbes, how do we get in this? What, what caused this?
Um, we've had multiple preliminary applications on the same property for projects that would, would conflict with each other.
Okay. John, any legal problems with this? Are you aware that we'll be completely within state law if we do this?
We believe that state law would not preclude us from the order in which we consider applications for projects, so.
That doesn't, you're not saying anything about multiple applications. It's the order in which we.
Right, so in this circumstance, there's nothing in state law that says that a city cannot indicate that you can only submit one application on your site for a project and you can't submit multiple applications that would conflict with one another. So, so state law would not preclude this ordinance. That's, that's what I'm stating.
That's, that was my question. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, you know, as, as much as I thought it goes without saying that you can't submit multiple projects for the same site, I was, I think this is the first time I've seen the actual language. Is it, is it absolutely clear who an applicant, who can apply? I mean, if I create four little companies, can each little company submit something? And are they the same applicant?
Gotcha.
It's talking about, yeah, I see what you're saying.
I mean, I mean, I thought there was gonna be the opposite. I was gonna say, per site, there can only be one active application, no matter where it came from. No matter where the homeowner said, hey, I want to build a single-family residence, but I'm also hiring an architect who's going to submit a plans for an eight-unit.
I guess, David, I, to help the question along, it strikes me odd that, that we call the applicant, which I understand, but there has to be some nexus to the property owner. So without the nexus to the property owner, I, I don't think you can have a proliferation of applicants. Like, I don't think you could make an application to improve my home and if you did, I'd be very angry with you because you have no nexus to or no right to my property. So I, I think the clarification goes to whether it's multiple, it's, you know, multiple corporations owning a single property. I think what they're trying to do here, if I'm following it just as a plain reading, is that, yes, we'll take your application, but if you're trying to game the system by creating various different ideas that create different shot clocks, if you will, said, no, we're going to take it in the order that's received. Or you have the option to discern which one you want to cancel out and then we'll address that one. So to me, that's kind of how I was reading it. And I will turn to staff and say, again, I don't think a stranger can put an application on my land, right? That's my, my property, I can't.
I think, Vice Chair, we had a subcommittee meet on this and so I'm familiar, I, I think you're interpreting it correctly. I'm just looking at it as saying typically the applicant is an architect, not the homeowner.
Excuse me if I may, but doesn't that last sentence preclude the foreclosure? So you could, even if you had.
I'm not arguing it's wrong. I'm trying to clarify.
If you had four applicants, like you had four companies and you submitted application one, then application two, application two wouldn't be accepted because that would require the foreclosing or overlapping on the same location.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think Chair, you know, just in that first sentence where it says an applicant, it could be an applicant or applicants shall not submit concurrent. That way, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Vice Chair, that in this ideal world, a property owner would not want multiple people applying on their property, but who's to say that a property owner wouldn't want people bidding and submitting different applications? We don't know. This is the first time that we've had this situation where we've had multiple applications that would conflict with each other on, on a property. So I think, I think changing that.
I think we should nail this incredibly solid because we're not dealing with reasonable people usually, right? This is, it's gonna be the letter of the law that follows here. The fact that we're even here at all is the fact that we know that a somewhat of a loophole appears. And so our job, I think, is to, I, I think, I think we've been pretty clear, I think you're gonna find the commission will be pretty clear on the policy we need and rely upon you folks to come up with the clear legal language. I just wanted to point out that the, that applicant is, is a, I just pointed out that when we first discussed this, I thought it was gonna be written the opposite, that it was gonna be around the site, not around the applicant, but.
And it's around both. And, and so I think your, your, your idea of applicant or applicants, you know, making sure that we're addressing that is, is something that we could include in a recommendation if that's where the direction you go.
Fair enough, fair enough. And we're in the clarifying section, I apologize.
I, I still think that that's covered in the last sentence, but it doesn't hurt to go ahead and throw that in there. When, so they shall not submit concurrent or simultaneous. You can submit whatever you want, but whether or not the city accepts it is different.
Here we're.
But what's different about that is that if, there's a, there's a point where there's a date locked down and the ordinances are locked in at the point of that date. We have to make sure that you can't submit six applications for one site, hoping to get the date of the ordinances.
And this will put the onus on the applicant that they, yes, we wouldn't accept additional applications without them withdrawing an application, but it also puts the onus on them.
Okay.
Yes, Stephen?
Thank you. Can we add something for clarity that, that states until the previous application was resolved, withdrawn, rejected, approved on the subject parcel? Would that, would that help that clarification? And just name the, the actions that necessarily, that are necessary to relieve a continued evaluation of the, the first one that came through the door?
I guess the question, this is for John, more than anyone else. Does that, does that help?
With ordinances, I'm always concerned about adding and thinking we're adding clarification by adding additional language. Because oftentimes, we don't. I, I think as drafted, it's clear that if you have an active application with the city and you try to submit another application that conflicts with that application, we, the city will not accept it. So if they withdraw the first application, you know, that, they could do that. They could withdraw the first application and submit the second one. I think that that is what this would require, this language would require.
So you think what I just said there is already implied?
I, I think the process is clear. You have one active application for your, for the site. If you try to submit a second application that conflicts with your active application, the city will reject it. So you then, as an applicant, decide what you want to do.
So it's back on, the burden's back on the applicant to do, to take one of these actions?
Exactly.
Okay, great, thank you.
And if I may, because I, I had that question myself, is, is, so that includes the entire life cycle of this. So if there's a variance involved, then you can't submit anything until after that variance has been resolved by the Planning Commission, for example, and all appeals have been, have been gone through. That would, that would, so that would inform to your definition of active, John?
Yes, it would cover all of the entitlements that are required pursuant to the application for the project, so.
Okay, I think those are our questions.
Okay, we'll move on to the.
Move to the second part?
Yeah, the sign code section.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Vice Chair and the Commission. So the second code amendment we're looking at this evening is to the sign code. The Commission may recall, a comprehensive sign code update was adopted by the Council in 2021. However, excuse me, a recent project on Western Avenue did raise several issues that may not have been anticipated at the time of that comprehensive update. These were included, that legal but non-conforming signs may not be able to be feasibly remodeled at their current size, that replacement signage allowed by the sign code would be much smaller. For example, for a monument sign, it would be six feet tall, 40 square feet max. Additionally, property and/or business owners could possibly be discouraged from remodeling these types of non-conforming signs. And there are some characteristics of sites that, that may have legal non-conforming signs. These include, you know, perhaps a number, significant number of tenants, multiple entrances to the site, and additionally, a building, you know, that could be set back quite a bit from the street. On May 21st, the City Council initiated the code amendment proceedings to amend the section of the code, the sign code regarding legal non-conforming signs. And at that time, staff said in general, recommendations to allow the remodeling and/or reconstruction of existing legal non-conforming monument signs included limiting the remodeled or new sign structure to the existing size and height, ensuring that the remodeled or new sign does not extend into the public right-of-way, also ensuring that any remodeled and/or new, you know, reconstructed sign does not create a public health and safety hazard as to, you know, driveways, intersections, et cetera, in terms of visibility. So after the City Council initiation, staff did meet with the zoning code update subcommittee to review a draft that staff had created. However, after, or I should say additionally, after considering the subcommittee's feedback, staff drafted the proposed code amendment that is before you this evening. And again, this is just regarding legal non-conforming signs. Staff did want to clarify that this proposed code amendment would only apply to a freestanding monument or directory sign or a pole sign. And then several of the proposed restrictions to allow a bit more flexibility to property owners and business owners, while still not allowing kind of a free-for-all in terms of replacing signs are, that they shall maintain the same type of sign structure and framework. So if it's, you know, if a sign is on two posts, it shall remain on two posts and not be on a solid, you know, foundation. Sign structure and framework height shall not exceed the current height of the existing legal non-conforming sign. And then as well, the remodeled and/or reconstructed sign structure and framework shall be located in the same general location as the existing, as determined by the director. And this was suggested because if a sign is, a legal non-conforming sign is extending into the public right-of-way, we want someone to be able to move it out of that right-of-way, but not, you know, to an extent that it's in a completely different location and this would be determined by the director. Additional requirements that are proposed are that the dimensions and square footage would not exceed that of the existing sign area, so they would not be able to make it larger. The lowest portion of the sign area shall not be below the existing, so shall not, it wouldn't become, you know, this more extensive in terms of vertical height sign. And also the remodeled sign or reconstructed sign and structure do not extend into the public right-of-way. And also including that, you know, it also still does not create a public health and safety hazard and this would be confirmed by consultation with the Public Works Department. And just as a visual example, using a, a sign here that currently exceeds the maximum of six feet tall and 40 square feet in, in area, you can see here that, you know, the, the height would not be able to be extended. The square footage, you know, we would sort of create a footprint, almost horizontal footprint for the area as well. Same type of structure and framework. You can see here, for an example, this sign has on two poles, it would have to remain similar to that. Then, you know, same location as existing. The lowest portion of the sign, kind of where this dash yellow line, it would not be able to extend lower than that, could not extend into the public right-of-way. You can see the dash lines here where the top portion of the sign may hang over the public right-of-way, it would have to be, you know, shifted in. And then you can see a driveway nearby, so this, something like this would require, you know, assessment by the Public Works Department. And given these two explanations by the director and myself, we do recommend the Planning Commission adopt resolutions for both the amendment for consideration of multiple applications as well as the amendment to the legal non-conforming sign section. Thank you.
Any questions of staff on the signs? Yes, go ahead, Pat.
The, so this would cover signs throughout Rancho Palos Verdes, it's not limited to the Western Avenue corridor?
Correct, correct. Any freestanding signs, which include monument and directory signs, as well as pole signs. I should note, pole signs, as the sign code currently reads, are only allowed in institutional zoning districts, but you do have several areas, most notably on Western Avenue, where there are existing commercial, you know, shopping center signs on poles.
And what limits, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with all of our sign code, but do we have limits on LEDs or, you know, all of a sudden, I now have a 40-foot LED that's a lot brighter or obnoxious? Is that not allowed by our other sign code?
We do have sections regarding lighting. I know in, with the subcommittee, we had discussed materials, so that perhaps would be something that we would want to include, because we did mention structure and framework, but not material specifically. But, yeah, I'd have to look into the sign code. I know we have sections that make sure that, you know, anything that's proposed is not too bright. There's a 30-day assessment of brightness, but in terms of the material, LEDs may be precluded, you know, if they're on the exterior, not, you know, within like a acrylic box, but I'd have to double-check that.
I think you get where I'm going. It's like all of a sudden, these signs could become very distracting. Right now, they're, they're relatively passive. You pass by, look at it or you don't look at it, it's up to you. But if you have something that's moving or lit, it changes the whole dynamic and now you have 40 feet of it, that's a lot.
Right, and we would definitely want to preclude that, so I could certainly just, you know, double-check in the code and see which sections would address that. I believe we do have sections that would address that.
But, but just to make sure, I mean, I, I want to help out these people so that we have new signs, but I also kind of like the idea of having smaller signs throughout the city, right? But, you know, if they're saying we're not going to change our sign unless we can, you know, get this kind of grandfathered in, I'm gonna err on the side of, you know, getting the signs fixed, but it doesn't mean that I necessarily like the fact that they're as big as they are.
Understood.
You know, I, I, sorry.
Well, one comment. Some time ago, the terraces came to us for new signage. Amy, were you involved in that?
I was not. I believe that was a previous planner.
One of the things they wanted was an LED sign advertising their movies. And you would see as you drove along, the latest movie being flashed on a screen in front of you, which was going to be Accident in Heaven. It came to us and we said, no. I think as a result of that, there may have been something put in the signing code or language to preclude that because it was definitely, definitely a hazard to anybody driving along. But that was one thing the terraces wanted that we said no to.
Right, I just want to make sure, because, you know, you drive down Hawthorne and you see like the scrolling, it's that, that cool building, you see the scrolling like, hey, you know, nail salon and so forth. That's not really what we're trying to, to accomplish here, right? What we're trying to do is to provide people who have non-conforming signs an ability to reconstruct their signs, not to redesign and, or at least in my opinion, not to redesign and, you know, take it, upgrade. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we discussed this in the subcommittee, I can't remember our result, but we didn't, we were really discussing, what does it mean to continue to be non-conforming and to build something of like? And I think conversion from flat sign to LED, I think, probably will all, it falls outside of the, it's not like for like. And therefore, the new ordinances should apply. And, and those lights and the light ordinances probably only apply too if, if we, as, as well. Because if you remember, I noted the idea of having signs, some of the signs might be visible from houses nearby. We don't want those to be on 24 hours a day either. But, yeah, I, I think that if it is. But, yeah, I think that if it isn't really covered right now, I think we should make sure that replacing, replacing a non-LED sign with an LED sign probably should result in having to conform to the latest regulations.
Maybe just a question for the commission. Is it concerning the, like, the reader board signage that kind of flashes? Or are we talking about just the illumination of the sign that's LED?
It could be anything. I just, I would feel more comfortable if there was another set of eyes that would approve any change to an in-kind signage, so that, you know, the luminosity could be addressed, you know, the movement could be addressed. The, you know, I remember on the school board, when schools wanted to put up, you know, signs in the neighborhood, and they wanted to have an information sign, a lot of neighbors were very upset by it, right? So just trying to protect neighbors and residents from intrusive signage that could come as a result of allowing these large signs, again, I just want it to be in-kind.
I tend to agree. I hate to interrupt a procedure. Are we in the discussion? I've lost track. Are we discussing, or is there a public, is there any public speakers on this?
There are no public speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, that was, I think we're still the questions, yeah.
No, not your fault, Ben, it's my fault. I lost track of where we were, and I think I started down a discussion thread rather than a clarifying thread.
You know, to that question, we do have in the sign code a subsection on sign illumination, and, you know, may, like, just something to think about is maybe adding into this non-conforming section that it must comply with the sign illumination section of the code.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then one more clarification, that electronic reader boards, they're only permitted in institutional zoning, so like your school districts, and not necessarily in the commercial zones, that's what's being proposed.
You know, if we're saying essentially in this resolution, and I'm just clarifying, so if we're in this resolution, and we're saying basically, these elements only cannot comply with the current code, everything else must comply with the code.
Right, that's what we're proposing, yes.
Well, I may make one comment, I think we came up in our subcommittee, is that we have a couple of different philosophies we could follow here. One is we could say, these ordinance needs to be incredibly objective. We need to spell it out with height, length, et cetera, et cetera. Or we can say that there's a director-level approval, you know, and I think we got here by trying to determine what the trigger was for director-level approval, where we got, as you point out, Commissioner Brock, some eyes on this, that someone come in and said, "I passed one through free frick, so I get to do that." The question is, how do we trigger it to where other eyes get to look at it, right? And that's what these, that's what all these are about. Would you agree with that, Amy, or is that? Because all of these things are just saying, at what point does the director take a look at it? Am I correct?
Yeah, this, I would be reviewing this as a director, looking at making sure that every single one of these things is met. Under the general requirements for all signs, most of these things, the measurements, you know, sign measurement is spelled out. The sign illumination is the one thing that we did not have under the non-conforming, but, you know, sign measurement, sign design, sign placement, sign maintenance, you know, all of those things are really addressed in this, except for that sign illumination, so that could be a recommendation.
Well, now, maybe it's just saying, is that if there's any change in sign illumination, then it triggers something.
I would just say that the sign illumination must comply with the regulations of 17.75.080C, which is the sign illumination section.
So that, would that, I mean, if the sign, okay, if you have a huge sign with huge lights on it today, I guess, they may not, they may not be able to really redo the sign then, right? If the lighting currently is not legal non-conforming, can we continue to make it legal non-conforming if they?
You could have it, if the lighting is going to change for the sign, that it must, the lighting must comply with the sign illumination.
Before, if we could, David, Eric wants to ask a question. Go ahead.
I bet, okay, please.
I have more of a comment, so I can wait if it's.
Well, so then, to go back to this, is, I understand the predicament with illegal non-conforming. Is it simply that it's legal non-conforming but for the illumination ideas? Done. But if you're going to do, we'll allow for legal non-conforming but for illumination. For illumination, you must conform to the current code. Would that, would that be sufficient?
I think to the chair's point, that, you know, that may end up creating a problem if there is something with a sign that is, you know, if they're leaving the lighting as it is, and that may not be complying as it is right now.
To say slightly different, that means that if you should choose to alter the existing illumination, then you have to follow. Okay.
Yeah, if the lighting of the sign is to change, then the lighting shall comply with the sign illumination.
Said differently, then there's a high probability, to address Commissioner Brock's comment, that the existing illumination of, that we have for our non-conforming signs do not create the kind of circumstance that you're currently concerned with, so.
I just don't want them to become a concern.
Understood, right, okay.
Yeah, and I personally would favor us erring toward having to conform to the new things, because if this current sign is significantly out of step with our illumination, and I don't know that there is, but if there were, we'd like to see a change, right?
Right.
And so, I wouldn't quite vote for or recommend a policy that says we give them more leeway on that.
Yeah, I think on that point, I still feel that this is very generous towards the sign owners. You know, the big picture is, we want the city to go by the 2021 code, and that's our vision for the city, for the zoning in the future. If they have non-conforming signs, we're hoping that they change them to conforming signs. You know, if, I mean, I think in terms of, while we may not like the aesthetics of them, and we would like them to refresh them, I think we want to push them towards going by new, our new standards. You know, if we, if we do allow them to do it, I would try to limit it to only the signs that are in the public right-of-way or a safety hazard, so that there's a really limited scope that allows them to redesign their sign. Otherwise, if they're going to redesign it, they're going to the new standards. That's my feeling on it.
That's interesting.
I don't know why we want to encourage them to continue to abide or have non-conforming signs, but now it's a brand-new one that's non-conforming.
Wasn't there some instances of some, what we consider minor changes, like changing the list of the names of people in the building, that ended up having to be redesigned and resubmitted? Is that right, Amy? There was a problem there?
I thought when we had discussed that, it was just that, you know, on a legal non-conforming sign, you can change out the copy, you know, if you're going from, you know, Bob's mattresses to, you know, a restaurant or something. So I think that's already allowed, as where just the faces sign, you know, the face of the, you know, the text is changing.
Okay, and that's, yeah, okay, because I thought that there was a concept that we were presenting a hardship in some of these places where maybe that hardship didn't need to exist. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Nolan about we should, we should drive folks to the new standards, and, but we don't want to throw out the easy cases of, "I just want to change the doctor's names," or something, as you point out.
Or possibly, it's a variance, or something that is more burdensome if they do want to redesign it, and they have to make a stronger argument why it's exceptional.
And that argument would be made to the director.
If I may speak to the commission about variances, one of the problems with signs, it's very difficult to make the statutorily required findings for variance, and namely, that there's something about your property that is unique as to other properties that doesn't permit you to get the benefits that another property would receive. So when you have, it's very difficult to make that finding for signage, and that's one of the problems we have, is, in fact, with regard to Western Avenue, they wanted to seek a variance, and we all looked at it and said, "We just can't make the findings for variance." So variances aren't an effective tool for allowing for exceptions to the signed ordinance.
Because there's also a First Amendment issue, is there not?
Yes, there's lots of First Amendment issues with signage, not only as to the content of the sign, but also as to the nature of the sign, so.
So when you have that discretionary approval, that opens up that, that argument of.
Right, exactly. You know, it's, "Oh, you're not allowing me to do this because you don't like what I have to say."
And if I may as well, it's my understanding, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, that the sign code, we may only apply the provisions in the sign code, not anywhere else in the municipal code, sort of a standalone code because of those First Amendment issues, so if we were to look at, you know, the possibility of adding like a variance permit or something, it would have to be a whole new section added to that sign code, and like John said, it may be sort of a self-defeating prophecy, because it would be difficult to make findings for any sign variance ever.
Right, and I don't mean to get too far down into the weeds on this one, but some of those signs, you know, not that they have historic value, but they do have character, right? And that is kind of what people have gotten used to seeing along that, so if they wanted to redo it in that same style, you know, kind of like you look at the old McDonald's arches, and there's a sense of nostalgia, right? You know, to me, I don't want to take that away, but I agree with Eric that we should be pushing people towards, you know, the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nolan, I keep calling you Commissioner Nolan, that we should be pushing people towards the 2021 code. Would we be allowed to do only for the Western Avenue corridor, or does this have to be city-wide?
You can establish, for instance, if you adopt a specific plan for a specific area, you can establish specific design standards for signage within a specific plan area. So conceivably, yes, you could establish a zone and establish why certain sign standards should apply here as opposed to other places.
So if we were to.
But it's complicated because of the First Amendment issues.
Right, but if we were to say that, you know, all mixed use now, because we deemed a lot of Western Avenue mixed use, that section would now have the ability to, and I know we're getting really complicated and.
Yeah, and to be clear, like, there are a lot of sites on Western Avenue that aren't mixed use, yeah.
I'm trying, I'm trying here.
I know, I got you.
I'm just, but I'm wondering, is there any legal non-conforming political speech out there?
But you could, I mean, you could take that whole sign, and I don't want to, you know, nobody's renting my space, and I'm going to put up, you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, all right, okay, is that a possibility? If that's a possibility, I agree. But, yeah, that would be, yeah, if you turn your sign, can you turn your sign that was used as a business into political speech in a, in a mixed-use zone?
I don't see what would preclude you from doing so. It's your property, and as long as you don't have an agreement with your tenants to display their name, you can do whatever you want with that sign. Say whatever you want.
I thought we had.
So the First Amendment also applies to commercial speech, and therefore, you, we cannot regulate the content of signs, right? That's just off the table.
We did a lot of this sermon between political speech and non-political speech when writing this code, right? Especially around residential areas, right, about what you could do, you couldn't advertise your business with a huge sign, but we could not limit political speech. And you're saying, John, that even, that if McDonald's decide they want to put up a huge political campaign sign that's the size of the, of the golden arches, if we had a McDonald's, let's say, that that would, that that would be fine?
What I'm saying is that we cannot regulate the content of the sign, so the language on the sign, except in very, you know, limited circumstances.
Yeah, there's, we went through it, there was certain exceptions, right? There was obscenities and other things like that.
Correct, correct.
I'm just wondering whether the, the specific thing we're looking at here, the, the trigger for legal non-conformance is really, can't be regulated if you decide that, to put up political speech instead of your businesses. But, except that, we might say, well, and if we even say, "No, you have to conform to the new code," but the new code says, you know, there's no limit on political speech.
Well, I think we've gotten a little bit off track from the objects, Stephen, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair. A different, different question. How does this affect, if it does, a special use permit? I'm trying to remember back in the ordinance, if that was addressed, is this a separate section, and if that would apply to the restrictions that we're looking at today? Commissioner Peristam, are you referring to, I think we, like, for example, we, a special use permit that was done for St. John Fisher for certain, certain banners, if that would, if they would conflict, or one would preclude the other, you mean? It would apply, that's a good example. I was thinking more of special events, that may not be a public special event, special event on private property or private venue. Would this apply to that? I would think something like that would be more of a temporary sign, if it was some kind of a one-time special event, and this would be, they would be, you know, if it's not existing, if it wasn't a sign for a special event, excuse me, like on an annual basis, but most of those do get taken down and put back up, so I would think they would fall into whatever, you know, our section of the code about temporary signs. I know it's temporary, I remember that part of that, but I didn't remember this type of discussion around that, that the restrictions that would apply to what that sign would look like. Is that part of that section as well? I just, I don't remember it, because it was a couple of years ago. Yeah, off the top of my head, I honestly, I can't quite recall, but we could certainly look at, you know, temporary signs on residential. I know, you know, on residential, you know, you have your real estate signs and certain things, and then commercially, you have other things, you know, temporary signs for, you know, sales, or, you know, clearance blowouts, or whatever. But I don't, I think there's very specific requirements for those types of temporary signs that is separate from these restrictions. I'm fine, I was just curious to know, was there some kind of a, an impact on this set of recommendations on that situation? I don't believe so, but Brandy and/or John can correct me if I'm wrong.
I mean, this is very specifically for non-conforming freestanding monument or directory signs or pole signs, so those are more, those are going to be the permanent signs.
We're going to say they're permanent, okay, I'm fine, then, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and I'll stop going down this path after this one. Could we put in signs built before a certain date? So we say that this applies not legal non-conforming signs built prior to 1975, because then you would really limit how much it could be used.
The hard, the hard part about that is, I don't know if we would have that, yeah.
You mean have records of when signs were built?
Yeah, have our records of.
But they might have records, so they have to, you put the burden on them to, because, you know, to Commissioner Nolan's point, we're not trying to make it easy for them, right? So you're saying, you know, "Look at the sign, I have a picture of the sign that was taken in 1970." That's good enough, that sign was there in 1970, just like we do with view restoration, right? You have evidence that was built, it was there, it existed prior to 19-whatever, but then we can really limit to just those signs that really need it, without opening it up free range across the city.
I'm just thinking.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, so at this point, then, we have an opportunity to discuss, yes, go ahead, Stephen.
I was going to make a motion.
Then we can also, also make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt staff's recommendations on the language for both these proposed code amendments.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have a second from Bob.
Can I?
I'd like to amend that.
Okay, here we go. David, yes?
I'd like to amend it to add the illumination aspect of it that we discussed.
I accept the amendment.
Okay, so we have the friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, right?
Bob's second stance.
And did it Bob's second stance of Director, he had a comment?
Yeah, my recommendation also would be, would you consider also, under multiple application, revising it to say, an applicant or applicants?
Yes, I like, I like that.
Discussion for that, too. Yeah, I, I think we need to make it bulletproof, because anyone who could think of submitting, hiring six architects and having them all submit, all paying a fee, is, is crazy enough to try to claim to get through this rock-solid language, too.
I accept the amendment.
To recap, we have staff recommendation.
I think it's two separate votes, though, isn't it?
No, I think we can take it as...
Oh, yeah.
We have to do two separate, or can we do one?
Vice Chair Santa Rosa, we'd request, because we have two resolutions that we consider each resolution separately.
So with respect, then, to the friendly amendments, just to recap, one is to add the plurality to the application idea, and the second is to add the illumination to the sign idea. So if, if we, so we'll do two separate motions. So if I could ask Stephen if you want to...
I guess, I could make the, I could make the first motion or whatever.
I think Steve, we need to withdraw your first motion.
No, no, we can, I'll withdraw.
Why don't we take them one at a time, is my suggestion?
Yeah, we have to, we have to redo. So Stephen, if you wanted, so David, you want to do which one?
I think the, I think we know what we want first. I, I can make a, we got a motion already, let's just...
No, but we, we can't, we can't do the motion, because we did both combined. We have to do them separately. That's, that was, so, we're going to amend that, we're going to go back to zero. We need a motion to do one for sign code, and the second motion to deal with applications.
Okay, so I can move that we accept the, the staff recommendation with the addition of closing the plurality of applicants.
Okay, so there's the motion for the applicant element.
Second.
And there's a second by Mr. Nulman. So we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. If we can have a roll call, Director?
Commissioner Brock.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nulman.
Yes.
Commissioner Peristam.
Yes.
Commissioner Sadat Najadi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa.
Yes.
And Chair Chura.
Yes.
Okay. So now we'll entertain a motion for the sign code, as staff reported with the friendly amendment to inclusion of illumination. Stephen?
I'd be glad to make a motion, the staff recommendation with the addition of the illumination clause.
We have a, a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And Bob has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. Director, if we can have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brock.
No.
Commissioner Nelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nulman.
No.
Commissioner Peristam.
Yes.
Commissioner Sadat Najadi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa.
Yes.
And Chair Chura.
Yes.
Okay, staff passes. The...
If I may just explain my, my no vote, which is customary, which we, I don't think...
You need to do that, yeah.
We don't need to, but it's just as customary. My, my no vote was, I would have liked to have seen a time limit, and I also agree with Commissioner Nulman's thought that we should be making this more, you know, really trying to get people to go to the 2021 code.
And, and my no vote, I think there should have been more revisions, discussions on it, and I know we're, it seemed like we're kind of pushing it through, and, and I think we should try to have more limitations about when a sign can be completely remade than what we have currently.
Thank you. The next item is new business, a planning commission work plan for July through December. Staff report, please.
I guess we have Deputy Director Octavio Silva.
Hi, good evening again, and Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. As Commissioner Forbes indicated, the next item here on the agenda is the Planning Commission's biannual report and work plan. The Planning Commission may recall that this item gets brought to the Commission on, on a biannual basis. And the report highlights the Planning Commission's, Planning Commission's accomplishments for the last six months, so that, in this case, would be December 2023 through, through June, July of this year. And then it also highlights the, a proposed work plan for the next fiscal year. So in terms of the current work plan, the slide here, as well as the information in the staff report, highlights the Planning Commission's accomplishments, which include, you know, making recommendations to the City Council regarding revisions to the city's housing element, as well as code amendments and zone, zone changes to effectuate the housing programs of the housing element. The Planning Commission also made recommendations to the City Council regarding the city's antenna ordinance, antenna code, and then tonight was making recommendations regarding the sign code and, and the filing of multiple applications. In terms of the meetings that we completed this, past, these past six months, it's been a total of 10 meetings with some 25, 26 applications, from high variations to conditional use permits, view restoration permits, I think we've considered more view restoration permits this past six months than I have in like 10 years of being here, but...
Certainly by number of trees.
Yeah.
The number of meetings dedicated to, right?
Yes, yes, thank you. So again, just a snapshot of what, what we've been working on these past couple of months. Oh, I'm not showing that in the, sorry. The next slide here identifies the, just the proposed work plan for the Planning Commission for the next six months. And the first bullet point is, again, just continuing our daily, daily code required mandate of considering land use development applications as, as, as needed as they come in. And it's also to consider additional code amendments to further effectuate the housing programs in the city's housing element. Those include, but not limited to updating the city's density ordinance, density bonus ordinance to comply with state requirements, as well as code amendments to identify code provisions for transitional supportive housing as required by, by the state, as well as additional clarifications to the city's residential building height, building height provisions. And the third bullet point is to review draft information on the city's arterial streets, fence and wall plans, and that, that, just kind of high, high-level review of that would be looking at walls along the street, the city streets, arterial streets, and preparing a more comprehensive plan for, for fences that are going to be rebuilt along those arterial walls to ensure that they're consistent with the character of, of the neighborhoods. And then the last bullet point here is to conduct additional trainings, particularly around the view restoration and preservation, especially with, you know, new, new commissioners coming on board. I think the, you know, having that training would be very beneficial. And the next slide? Sorry. The next slide here is that the Planning Commission's biannual report will be presented to the City Council on June 18th. We kindly request that the Chair or the Vice Chair be available to participate at that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And this is a report just to...
Receive the file.
Thank you. So not needing a roll call before moving on to the, for the very last item, do we need to roll call on that, the adjournment?
Well, hang on, hang on.
No, no, I know, we have other, I just want to make sure we set anticipation correctly.
You will need to do roll call on the receipt of files.
Just so, just don't want anybody kind of bolting for the doors, because we have to go one through then. So the next items are, are items to be placed on future agendas, Director?
For, for that one, we'll need to have...
Yeah, but I, I...
Oh, for this one, we...
I'm at this particular item, I assume there's no public speakers as well, you got to do that.
Correct, correct.
I'm sorry. So for this one, we'll also need a roll call, I apologize. Okay, good, okay. So with no further questions of staff, no comments from the public, do I have a motion to accept the staff report?
I, I would like to, before we do that, I'd like to add a comment to it, perhaps.
Okay, go right ahead.
Having presented this information to the City Council a few times now, one of the things I always bring up that doesn't appear in this briefing, which I think should, is the activities of the subcommittees that we have. And I think the City Council should be aware of the amount of times and the frequency by which our subcommittees actually work with the staff. I express that that's an important part of us working together, and I, I'll be honest, I've expressed that it hasn't been leveraged enough in the past. I think that's starting to change now, but I think one way of communicating that is to identify how many subcommittee meetings we've actually had, and what their purposes were. So if there's a way to put that in, fine, otherwise it's just going to be spoken and, well, maybe not, because I have to add something to the last thing, is that I, I will be out of town on June 18th for this meeting, so I'd kindly request that the Vice Chair attend the meeting in my stead.
Thank you, David.
So is that a motion to add?
Well, I think we have another comment.
Oh, got it.
It was just a discussion point, Director.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you have anything, David? Okay, any other? Okay. So now we're ready for a motion?
You're ready?
Okay. One motion.
I move to...
Eric, go ahead.
Adopt the staff report in addition to Chair Chura's comments.
Second.
We have a first, we have a second, we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brock.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nulman.
Yes.
Commissioner Peristam.
Yes.
Commissioner Sadat Najadi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa.
Yes.
And Chair Chura.
Yes.
And, and if, if you don't mind making a PSA here at this particular moment, which is that Commissioner Sadat Najadi will be leaving our ordinance subcommittee as she departs, so there will be an opening for that, that we should consider in the near future.
Okay.
PSA over.
And, actually...
Go ahead, Stephen.
And Dave, like, or Chair, like to add that there'll be an opening on the Housing Committee?
The Ad-Hoc Housing Committee, good point, that's right.
Okay.
Sorry, Steve, I knew you were on it.
All righty. So the next item, are the items to be placed on future agendas? I'm sorry, did we do, yeah, we did a roll call. Okay, I got confused, sorry.
For the June 25th, we do not have any items on the agenda, and we, at this point, do not have anything for the July 9th meeting.
Okay, and we don't need a roll call vote for that, correct?
No.
Okay.
So if I may just ask a question, so, you know, we had the three applicants tonight for the same view restoration, so how do we make a recommendation or decide if we want to make a recommendation to the Council that we want to limit view restorations to one applicant at a time? What's the proper venue to do that?
I think eventually the, the City Council needs to direct the staff to do so.
Right, but, I, I understand...
We need to convince them to do that.
Right, I understand, we can't make that decision, but my comment was, how do we recommend to City Council that they make that change?
What we were just wondering is if it could be made as a change to the order, because it would be if it's the view preservation and restoration ordinance, I don't know if they can just make that without a vote. Is that correct?
It was adopted by a citizens initiative, so we can amend it.
And the, the planning process was spelled out in the, the resolution? How many?
It's in the ordinance.
Okay, okay, I'm just asking, if you wouldn't mind, take a look, and if, maybe during staff comments, just say, hey, you know, if you want to do this, this is how we would do this.
Got it.
Good, Stephen.
Thank you.
I think that's a pretty fair question, yeah.
Yeah.
What, I'm going to provide a little background here. My last chance to provide some background.
Yay!
The, the reason that it evolved that way is, it, once upon a time, a permit to take out for a view restoration was pretty cheap. And then we got these really, really complex situations of multiple applicant, multiple foliage owners, and multiple folks were also affected from, as the application side. Since that time, both have expanded. The cost is way up. So one of, one of the mechanisms is what we, we may have seen here tonight, is a sharing of cost for permits. And then if there's an appeal, sharing of cost for the appeal as well.
Right.
So that's really been, been the driver. I mean, you, you guys can do whatever you want.
Right.
But that's the driver and background of why, why it's, it's evolved to what it's evolved to today.
Right, but I would make it the most onerous I could to, if you want to chop down somebody else's tree, it shouldn't be easy.
All right. So with that, if we could move to a motion for adjournment?
Oh, we need, we need Commissioner Peristam or Sadat Najadi to...
Okay, here, go for it.
Fine. I move to adjourn the meeting, and I'll...
We have a second?
Second that motion.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Don't let them go.
Hearing no discussion, we'll take, take a roll call, please, Director.
Discussion on the move to, I have a discussion point. I can't, I can't adjourn with Stephen Lance.
Commissioner Brock.
I...
Commissioner Nelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nulman.
Yes.
Commissioner Peristam.
Yes.
Commissioner Sadat Najadi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Santa Rosa.
Yes.
And Chair Chura.
Yes. If it were me, Lance, Steve, you should have voted no.
This may go first, never.
And you know, if I were there, I'd be convincing you to go to the tap house for some celebration for you guys. I, we need to do that sometime soon regardless. But thank you. I'm not even sure if I'm still on or not, but see you guys.